Okay, I'm going to open the regular meeting. Excuse me, excuse me, please, regular meeting. I'm going to read the governor's mask update. The updated CDC guidance continues to state that individuals who are fully vaccinated may, as a general matter, resume many of the activities that they are engaged in prior to the pandemic without wearing a mask or staying six feet apart, except where otherwise regulated or required by federal, state, or local laws, rules, or regulations. In response to the recent spread of the Delta variant, however, the CDC's updated guidance does recommend that even fully vaccinated persons wear masks or face coverings when indoors if other risk factors are present. In light of the information provided by the CDC, in order to maximize protection of vulnerable individuals from the Delta variant, the Department of Public Health now advises that a fully vaccinated person should wear a mask or a face covering when indoors and not in your own home if you have a weakened immune system or if you are an increased risk for severe disease because of your age or an underlying medical condition. Or if someone in your household has a weakened immune system, is that increased risk for severe disease or is unvaccinated? Okay, so the first thing on our agenda is, I believe, this right here, I got it, yeah, is an A and R. Or South Munson Road, all to zero. Yeah, okay. Dan, you're here. It looks like we're dividing. Looks like we're dividing a lot out, out of. Going to call this lot. Lot five, yep, lot five.
Currently was at one time already approved lot. And it was known as lot three. And then when the plan was put together to create lot four, they reincorporated lot three back into the overall parcel. Now the Wellahands daughter is looking to build next door. So they're going to put the same lot back together.
Okay. Gotcha, okay, so. It's an A and R, any questions?
Any stormwater concerns come up during the building permits since it's a single family home, right?
Yep.
I'm actually endorse. I knew that we endorsed the application for all these hard.
What else?
December 6th.
Second, all in favor? Yes, yes, I do.
I'm just getting my.
Take care of them. No other business for the regular meeting? Close that meeting now? So, at this time, I will reopen the continuance for the public hearing for sixteen solar, I'm sixteen Summers Road. Twenty twenty-one C. I'm not sure. Counselor, I'm not sure if you received the letter from Jean Christie or not, but it did say, basically it said hello, or hi, Joanne, I wanted to follow up on this letter. After forwarding this to you last week, the applicant's engineer provided me with a well-location plan to document that the proposed development is not within the hundred foot of the existing drinking water well. And this satisfies Jean's crisp comment, three B from their November 29th letter. So, I don't know.
I didn't see, but I was aware of it.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, I'm going to turn it over to you if you'd like to.
Sure.
Some other meeting, who knows?
Just a couple things that I will take long, but I want to address a few of the items that were left over from last time to make sure that you're all aware how we dealt with them. One is the stormwater application, which I have here. That was also addressed through Ms. Christie as well.
Yes.
In the letter, so that's, that should wrap up all of the, I guess, prerequisite requirements needed. The second thing is I just want to take one moment and digress. I think visually this is very helpful to me and maybe it is to some of you. And this is, the first page is just to staple this two sheets. The first one, just the actual map of the aquifer protection overlay district. And the second one is a blow up of the section where this particular project is involved. And I think the second one, I'd ask you to just leave open for me for a minute and I'll come back to it. But this gives you, and you can associate yourself with the value in itself. You see the Meadowbrook Lane over there, Summers Road. Now, there were a few. Few items brought up last time that I think are important. One in particular was, to me, seemed to be kind of something that is reoccurring and it came out of nowhere, but I know it's significant to the board. I, you know, I did watch some of the other meetings, I know what was addressed there. And that's in relation to this process that somehow hazardous materials could be stored on the site. So I think I have a two-fold way to address it. The first is I want to dispel the disbelief that the insurance can end. So, and I have a letter from the insurance broker we deal with to addressing two issues. Number one, the town will be named insured. You'll get notice of every non-payment of policy can't be terminated without town notice and town has the right to step in and pay the policy if, but more importantly, remember it's a condition of the permit. So if we don't pay the policy, we lose our permit, which in turn calls our default on our financing, the whole, you know, it's millions of dollars to us. So there's really no benefit not to have it, but just assume we're irresponsible. I've heard the allegations of the other people selling it to a third party and someone else coming in. We never know what's going to happen, so that absolutely can happen. If it's sold to a third party, it doesn't matter, you still have this condition. And I asked, this is Phillips Insurance Company to send me an email to that effect. And I have a copy of it, what's more important than I heard, well, a million dollars in today's day is insignificant, it's not enough to cover any loss. So what I did is asked them, you know, coverage wise, and I have one for up to three million. So I would suggest one million sufficient, three million is way more than could ever be conceived. And that costs us a lot more money annually. So this is a copy of that letter that talks about being a named insured. And that's, that's how all banks rely upon insurance on properties. Because remember, if the borrower doesn't pay the insurance, the bank, that's their collateral. So this is a well-accepted principle and practice in business that's been, that's gone on for decades and decades and will go on going forward. I think that should put to rest if there were a problem. But now let me explain to you how we're going to stop any potential problems. I thought, we thought long and hard about this. And we went over our operation maintenance plan with you before and you understand it's worth highlighting for a moment, highlighting, excuse me. Steve Anwood, who is one of the partners here, is a resident of Hampden, has been building homes in Hampden for 36 years. He will be the operator of this facility. He'll be the person that's there five days a week. And what we've added to our operation maintenance manual, which I think really just nips it in the bud, the, within 48 hours of any new unit being occupied or any new customer, we will search the inside of that storage facility for hazardous substances. Similarly, within 48 hours, anybody accessing their unit, we will search their unit to see if there's any store hazardous substances inside or stored inside of it. Now you may ask yourself, well, how can you, you know, isn't that a lot of work? Stop and think about it, it takes a minute to do the math. So we were going to have, we, if we had 20 visits, which would be a high number of visits for a few occupancies in one day, it's a rarity, but let's assume we had 20. That only requires a person going to 20 units when they're there for hours on during the day, go in, do a physical inspection, make sure there's nothing, and now you're going to see it. You're going to see if there's something, you walk through it and that's it. How do we do this? Remember, every single unit is on camera. So we know every day when they review the film, who would access, what units did they access, they go inside it and they, they do a sweep of it. The second thing is the same thing occurs when they're doing all new units, anybody who visited a unit, they go through those and, and check it. Now you know, because we've spent an enormous amount of time and I saw in the other meeting you did it, you talked, it talked about how, what a low impact use this is, which means how low the number of visitors are per day. So this is something where you are absolute policing of it. And I told you a few minutes ago, I was going to come back to your map. Because if you look at the second page blown up, I'm going to tell you some of the uses that are in that, in that area. Gas station, restaurants without oil-water separators, which we went back and looked at. Trash companies picking up people's trash where people dump stuff in there all the time. Septic companies and several, several other high commercial uses are in that district right directly in close proximity on the second page. None of these have the protocol that we have here. In fact, this will perhaps be the most forward-thinking project to guard against something that we don't believe is high, high risk, but apparently there's some concerns, so we're trying to address them. So what I, what I have here is an updated operation and maintenance manual and you'll see on the, at the end of it, I added to the end of it, so you'll see the, the protocol for the 48 hours of any unit being occupied or any access to a unit, there would be a search and, and obviously if anything was found, it would be disposed in the appropriate manner and brought off-site and handled. Now I just want to take one step back for a minute. And, and this goes in the concept, do you remember when we first started this, this was like years ago? We talked about an environmentally green site. This is a green site, I'm dressed in green in signature of that, this is what we're talking about. Everything we've done on this site is environmental. And what we're doing here, I think the trade-off, and I, and I want, and all along I've been saying, let's not talk about the other project, but I think it's important now for a minute to just look, have you look specifically at this project. Why are we unique and why should you vote unanimously to approve it? Because the balancing of the interest of the town has been accounted for here. We don't have to get beyond it, there's a historic home there that we're going to keep that we don't want. We're keeping because that's a trade-off, it's something that was important to the town, important to its residents, residents. And in fact, the board gave me the letter that was circulated to this crowd at the beginning from, and I don't recall her name, the woman who's very concerned about historic properties here. And then I went into the research and told you, a lot of people probably didn't understand that, the significance of it. We're willing to keep it at great cost to us, which is incredible trade-off, which is something much different than other sites. The second thing is, we talked about the significant trees, I won't get into that, but that's really important not to skip over that, because we're going to maintain this beautiful country house aesthetic set, setting from a roadway, which is substantially different than any other project that has proposed or would go there. Alternative uses don't include removing the house, does not necessarily include any of the requirements that you could compel now, because if we don't need a special permit, other uses go in there without any safeguards from the town. So you have a, you have an opportunity now to control this use where otherwise you're not going to have that opportunity, nor, and I, this is the first time I make a comment to all of the people, the residents are here. This is, in my view, a beautiful meeting of public interest and private interest, trying to find something that works. And it's foolish to think that something's not going to go with it, because if we don't develop the issues, either we're going to develop it or someone else is going to develop it for a use to which can be far more harmful as far as aesthetics, lighting, use could go late into the night, high traffic, all those issues, which this board won't have control over. I say that because when we talked about this, we talked about low-impact uses, low traffic, low on town services, low on water demand. I can't imagine a lower impact use than what we're proposing, but let's double down on that. When we were here last time, whether it was this, this meeting or not, you were looking at over 750 storage units, all concentrated within approximately 10-acre or plus parcel area. We now have over five acres to the rest of the residence distance away from this site. There are only two residential properties. And I want to remind you, because I went by out there again today. One residential unit has a veterinarian fence about 30 feet from the house with insurance company with lighting overhead. I went by again today to see if it was just one time that I saw it last time, it's there again, flashing straight up in the air into the yard. We're almost 200 feet away, I gave you the diagram, I gave the dimensions, we measured them out, I think it was 187 point something. So you have that from last time. There is, and that's to the fence, which is a 50-foot setback on our property per one of the board members' requests. So I think it's important to, to look at this project separately, because I really do think we've paid a great attention to detail to try to comply with not only what the board wants, but also we listen to the residents and try to find something that works for all. The only other point I'd make that I know there were a number of conditions and I'm not going to go through each and every one, one of them. All of the ones that we privileged to discuss, we have no opposition to, we incorporate into our plans, you have the updated plan. If there are any additional reasonable ones, we would suggest that our operation maintenance plan be approved as submitted with the updated, which I think is the most important part of it, is the part dealing with this concern about hazardous substance. So that now we know we have a mechanism, and I will tell you there, and if you ask yourself this, there's not one other business located in this map I gave, right in this area, not one other business that has anything remotely close to these safeguards. And you couple that with our state-of-the-art DEP type of asphalt we're using, which is the requested type of use from our regulators, both on a state and federal level. I think that, and that's obviously a higher cost to us, because we want to be responsible. And then couple that with the last piece, and I'll end with this. If you look at this from a road, it's probably as aesthetically pleasing, and I drove up and down that strip, if not more pleasing than any other property on either side. And I say that, and that's a big statement to say, but I went and looked at them all, none of them are going to have a beautiful historic home tying with a black fence, and I'm going to bring you full circle where I started, the black door. So there's great thought to every detail. Look at it, you got a neon-lit gas station right after that, you got a strip plaza with lights all over it, you got a giant plaza on the other side with the restaurants, very pretty, but you've got it set back over cars, that's all you see, you got a trash truck next door, you've got a septic trucking company with stuff strewn all over the place. And, and we're giving you the, we're agreeing to controls so that you know this use is always going to look aesthetically pleasing and be something, whether people want to acknowledge it or not, it's a need to the area. So those are the reasons why we think you should support it, obviously. I'm willing to address any questions and if there is some opposition, I would just like one moment to address it if there's anything that comes up.
Anything from the?
Jeff Grissette, 15 Meadow Brook Lane, Hampton, Mass, resident. Couple things we, we want to get through, we aren't privileged to anything that you've got tonight as new stuff, I know you're going to go through it and make sure it's up to speed. I want to let you know that we still have representation, legal representation through the Wilson Group, Seth Wilson. Tonight, we're not going to take a lot of time. We're going to have Mary Grissette speak to the bylaws. If you want expert information on insurance, we have Peter for that. If you want information on the permeable asphalt, we have Mark Feeny for that. From the beginning, our point on this was, this is the wrong spot for self-storage. It's not in unison with our town, with the harmony, with the rural character, with anything that we show there. We are not against the self-storage, it's on Commercial Drive. There's another place for it. With that, I'd like to have Mary speak on the bylaws. Thank you.
Mary Grissette, 15 Meadow Brook Lane. And as you know, because I spoke about this the other night, I just would like to read the bylaws that we see this project also related. So looking first at 6.11 Water Supply Protection Overlay District, 6.111, purpose to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the community by protecting and preserving the surface and groundwater resources of the town of Hampden and the region from any use of land or buildings which may reduce the quality and quantity of its resources. 6.117D, requirements for a special permit in the Water Supply Protection District, 6.117D1, a complete list of chemicals, pesticides, fuels, and other potentially toxic and hazardous materials to be used or stored on premise in quantities greater than those associated with normal household use. 6.117D2, those businesses using or storing toxic hazardous materials shall file a hazardous materials management plan with the planning board, hazardous materials coordinator, fire chief, and board of health, which shall include provisions to protect against the discharge of hazardous materials or waste to the environment due to spillage, accidental damage, corrosion, leakage, vandalism, including spill contamination and cleanup procedures, provisions for indoor secured storage of hazardous materials and waste with impervious floor surfaces. 6.117E, additional procedures for a special permit in the Water Supply District, which is 6.117E2, the planning board may grant the required special permit only upon finding that the proposed use meets the following standards, those specified in Section 10. A, in no way during the construction or thereafter adversely affect the existing potential quality or quantity of water that is available in the Water Supply Protection area. And I think it's critical for us to keep in mind that this is going on top of our water supply area. Be designed to avoid substantial disturbances of soil, topography, drainage, vegetation, and other water-related natural characteristics of the site to be developed. And this will be doing extra over three acres of land. Bylaw, 10.21, the purpose of this bylaw is to provide a comprehensive review of procedures for projects which may have significant impact on the town of Hampden to minimize the impact of such development and to ensure compliance with the goals of the, of the town. 10.212, to promote attractive and viable commercial and industrial districts. Fencing something in with eight-foot fencing tells me that it's not an attractive project that's going there. Eight-foot fencing is unattractive and what's behind them, eight-foot fencing is unattractive. Munson Savings, Rediker, Rosewood, the Hampden House. Green Insurance, it's all about, well, not, it's all about me. All of those businesses, you don't see eight-foot fences anywhere. Why don't you see eight-foot fences? Because they're beautiful buildings, each and every one of those buildings are very attractive. This is not going to be attractive. Any self-storage that you go by, it is not attractive. 10.213, protect the rural character, aesthetic qualities, natural environment, and historical features and property and property values of neighboring properties and the town. This project will diminish the property values of those neighborhoods that abut, but also the property values in this town. This project in particular will impact the property values on Steeple View. Steeple View has a view of the church steeple, it will now in the wintertime have a view of self-storage. It looks right down into that area. 10.812, the use is in harmony with the purpose of this bylaw. Self-storage facilities is not in harmony with our bylaw. 10.817, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining zones, not be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare. We spoke at one of these meetings about the potential of a fire. We all know in June in Connecticut, there was a 13-alarm fire that took place in a self-storage facility, and that self-storage facility was not planted right inside a buddy neighborhood. That is very serious, especially when we, we have a volunteer fire department. We have issues with water anyway when we have a fire, and now we're putting something that has potential to cause significant damage to the neighbor. 10.8110, the proposed project shall not create significant adverse impact to the quality of surface water or groundwater. to the quality of surface water or groundwater during and after construction, and provisions may be made for ensuring groundwater recharge. Ten point eight one, ten point eight one one two, the design of the property shall minimize the visibility of visually degrading elements to protect the neighboring properties from potentially detrimental or offensive use of screening or vegetative buffers. Eight-foot fencing is offensive use of screen.
Yes.
Peter Simmons, seven more. On the insurance issue. I did not attend the last meeting on the other projects. I did watch the. And I know that there was a lot of discussion at that meeting. My understanding of these things is that virtually all these policies are written on a claims-based basis. It's very difficult to get an occurrence-based policy to cover pollution. You can get coverage for anything, really, to get a management policy, but they're prohibitively expensive. The other thing is, is that most of these policies have expenses, including legal fees, that are payable and erode limits. In a lot of general liability policies, in fact, most general liability policies, when you get sued, the insurance company will pay for you to get a lawyer, and there is no cap on those costs. When the expenses are payable within limits, that erodes the limit. So if you get a lawsuit, a lawsuit that's around property owners, and you have to pay an attorney a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars to defend the case, that's going to erode the limit. That much less coverage available. These policies are very complicated. Just because you have a policy, doesn't mean you're just gonna be covered. You're going to have exclusions within the policy, including exclusions for damages that are expected or intended. Now, nobody's going to intend damages, but depending on circumstances, you could have somebody who has knowledge of someone storing materials in a certain location, and if they know that, then there might not be coverage. If you look at these policies, and I ask, I implore you all to look at these policies, you'll see how complicated it is. Just because you have coverage, doesn't mean that pollution is gonna be. And I don't agree that a million dollars is not a problem. I can't say for sure that you're going to have a tax return here, but we do. And it's making it difficult to police, because the difference between a storage facility and these other businesses is that you've got many, many units that are not controlled. These other businesses are one business. You have people that manage the business and are in one location, but many other storage facility, you can't control what people do. If you can, it's very difficult.
Anything else? Do you have anything else?
Just one comment with respect to, and I think we may agree, actually, it's two comments. The first is every bylaw that she read, we've complied with, and it's been addressed through the dialogue of back and forth in the plan. My second comment is, if the neighbors want six feet on the fence, which she had proposed originally, we're happy with that. We're fine with that. And that's, that's very in keeping with the area. Whether it's four, six, eight, we're willing to do whatever the board wants. We think the buildings are very aesthetically pleasing, and and from a view from Steeple View, by the way, we're not there. I can't see it, but even if you could, it's a lot better than looking at our cars and strip plaza having a nice, nice row of properly laid-out buildings. Those are the only two comments I have.
All right, I'm going to motion close the public hearing. We, oh, I'm sorry.
You gotta entertain a motion.
I'd entertain a motion, close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing for S P twenty twenty-one C sixteen Summers Road.
With that said, I'm going to now open a regular meeting, and we're not gonna receive any comments from any of the people, any of the audience or the applicant at this time. We have, I think, from the previous meeting, I'm opening it up. If you'd like to add any conditions.
We have a copy of this.
Yeah.
They each have, they all have.
Yep.
It's in the packet.
Yes, yeah. I'm sorry, we're, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Engineering thing?
I'm sorry.
And don't tell me you're sorry.
We're not gonna recognize it. That's what.
I know you don't.
Okay.
You can't answer me.
The hour of operation.
I would move that we include the same hours of operation. Seven A M to nine P M, Monday through Friday, nine A M to seven P M on Saturdays and Sundays. Federal, state holidays.
Second. Okay. All in favor of that? Um. Number two. Prior to the start of the construction, applicant shall submit a stormwater.
I would move that prior to starting construction, applicant submit stormwater permit. Stormwater permit application and stormwater pollution prevention plan to the designated agent for your approval.
And do I have second? Yeah. All in favor? And we have that application now. Um, number three.
Move that the site require a provision for a knock box, knock box or similar means of entrance for emergency services twenty-four seven.
All in favor? Number four.
Move that all landscaped. Dead trees must be replanted. And move that landscaping and any dead trees
Yeah.
must be replaced within one growing season.
All in favor? Number five, the annual reports. I think this would go to the operations, the O N M.
Sure, before we get to that.
Yeah, okay.
So. So, and then we get referenced in the special permit, or do we have to specifically? This O N M plan would be referenced in a special permit if awarded, or do we have to specifically identify it?
I can reference it in the decision, along with the site plans.
So what, what happens is this gets attached to the special permit.
Right, right.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah. It'll say documents and all references. Yeah.
A special condition identifying that this
Right.
O N M plan dated December seventh, or revised December seventh.
Yeah.
So. It moved that any doesn't have. It doesn't say that a manual report.
Right.
So, so. Would move as a special condition that we include annual reports of maintenance or repairs conducted under the O N M plan to be submitted to enforcement officer, building inspector.
All in favor?
Six. Move that any damage to the post-fencing be replaced or repaired during one month's notice of the defect.
Second, all in favor?
Move that any application of pesticides, herbicides be conducted by a certified licensed agent according to local, state, and federal regulations.
Maddie, what's?
Maddie, okay. Okay, all in favor?
Move that the, that a requirement to conduct a weekly inspection of the site for removal of trash debris or litter, et cetera. Especially.
Yep.
Second.
Okay.
Move that the facility, that a condition of the special permit that the facility be maintained in a manner consistent.
You're a special approval. Yeah.
I agree.
What's that? Change.
I don't.
Okay. Um.
Matter, yeah, facility. Move that there be a special condition, facilities to be maintained in a manner consistent with its initial approval and initial construction.
I'm sorry, initial approval and what?
Construction.
And construction. Want to read it again?
Yeah. The condition is the facilities to be maintained in a manner consistent with its initial approval and initial construction.
Okay, all in favor?
Move that we make a special condition that no business shall be allowed to operate directly or indirectly on the premises that is not consistently prescribed use of the property. That a special condition included that the facility shall not allow for the storage of hazardous materials in quantities greater than the reportable quantities identified in three-ten C M R forty.
Maddie, second. All in favor?
Move that any rental contract shall prohibit the storage of materials listed at three-ten C M R forty and quantities greater than those associated with normal household use.
All in favor?
Move that storage of any flammables, inflammables, or combustibles or hazardous materials also be done in accordance with chapter one forty-eight, C M R five twenty-seven, the mass general laws.
All in favor?
Move the special permit. Any special permit granted to the applicant who run the land and be transferable.
No. Okay.
Kind of an upswing.
Somebody put a question mark on the teleprompter.
All right. All in favor?
All right, so the proposed fence for this one
Yep.
is black to be consistent with the black door. Right? So this condition would.
So, eight foot in, black.
Yeah, I would move.
You have the neighboring.
It is, that's about six. You're talking about that memory.
Just saying, if another fence on that really, probably better goes consistent. You mean all the way around, or? Just, just really, I didn't want to just.
Just where, sorry. Yeah. So if you were consistent, you'd wanna run an eight-foot against the residential.
Right, and then six.
And then six foot under, yeah, across the front. Any discussion on that?
I, I don't necessarily have an issue with it. Yeah, so they, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine. This is what we're, right, we got, we got a fence and everybody's on this.
Yes.
Yeah, so then I'm not so concerned. Here's the much taller than that's. So. I guess that would. So, what do we just say, six foot, except where the, where what's residences? Okay, all right, so six feet on Summers Road, six foot, okay. Yeah, so I would move that make it a condition of the special permit. The proposed project have a six-foot pass along Summers Road with an eight-foot fence.
I would move that he speak up. We have a right to understand what you're saying. This is a democracy in our town. So why can't he not hear what you're saying? I don't want to succeed to it. I want to disappear what you're saying.
I didn't realize you were having a problem hearing me now. You could let me know without getting upset.
No, we can't. You're nine X, you will let us.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right, so, so we're talking amongst ourselves, and when we finish discussing, you'll hear what we have to say.
But, all right, I would move that the project and move that the project have a six-foot fence along Summers Road, eight-foot fence along the remainder of the property.
Okay. So that would be anybody areas, because they're gonna work but another commercial area to the north.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanna verify. Yes, so we're talking eight foot around the entire perimeter, six foot on Summers Road.
Okay. That's right.
Are you putting the color in that motion?
Uh, black.
A black.
That's the
Yeah.
A black solid vinyl fence.
Six-foot black. Okay. The condition being the project have a six-foot black vinyl, you saying solid in this motion, solid. Solid vinyl fence along Summers Road and an eight-foot fence along the remainder of the property. along Summers Road and an eight foot fence along the remainder of the property.
Second, Christine.
I'd make a motion that the proposed entrance gate also be a solid black vinyl fence. Six foot to match adjacent fencing.
To match, I'm sorry, hold on a minute.
Just a minute.
Those entrance gates to be a six foot solid, black solid vinyl fence to match the adjacent property you said?
To match your Jason fencing.
Sorry. Okay. Okay, got it.
Say it again, please.
The proposed entrance gate is to be a six foot black solid vinyl fence to match the adjacent fencing.
Okay. Seconded by Heather. All in favor?
Make a motion that any signage installed under section seven point six two two one A shall not exceed twenty four square feet and shall remain unlit.
All, David.
Hi. Move that the facility shall not permit the storage of motorized vehicles, including but not limited to automobiles, boats, recreational vehicles, landscaping equipment, et cetera.
All in favor? Okay.
This next one.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we have any, do we want to discuss this or should before I make a motion or is there any concern?
Would you like to, any discussion?
I don't have a concern with these with this particular motion, but given that the applicant has offered to increase that or if anybody else has concerns with the dollar values. Let me do that some comment on.
I'm, I'm open to discussion.
Is, is the risk of contamination of water greater in this one than the other proposal? That would get questioned that made the answer to decide if we wanted more insurance.
So what you're saying is the, you're asking if the risk is greater?
Yes.
In this one?
Right.
And what, what are you asking?
Because of semi-permeable.
Because of the, right.
And the fact that it's in a moral. Never.
So. So it's, it. There's an aquifer protection, and that's one, okay?
Yes.
And then there's a water protection overlay.
This is, this is aquifer, okay, so, given that, and the semi-permeable asphalt, is the risk any greater for contamination of the water? Because that's what we're most concerned about.
In my opinion, is based on what I do for a living, my opinion is that self-storage is not a significant risk of, like, if I was conducting a phase one environmental site assessment, there's other site uses associated with these properties that I would be much more concerned about than self-storage.
Would you have it?
I would really point to a number of other use, existing uses in the area for a reason to go looking for something, but I wouldn't, self-storage itself wouldn't trigger me to say, oh, you gotta go, go do a phase two.
So my, that's my opinion. So I'm not an expert, okay, but I'm going to say that if you have contamination with a permeable asphalt, it should be contained before it reaches the aquifer. Okay, so if, when I say contained, it would be would not reach the, it should not reach the aquifer, it should not reach your
Because of the construction. Sixteen foot well.
Because I'm asking, I'm going to either ask you to quiet down, or I'm going to ask you to be removed.
I don't mind being removed because I can't see anything happening here.
Okay, that's fine.
And you're saying because of the construction of the semi-permeable asphalt, the different layers?
Yeah.
Is minimal risk that even with some contamination that it would hit the.
Say that again.
That it would hit the water, contain the water.
It should be able to be contained.
It should be.
It should be, can I guarantee it?
Right.
I can't guarantee a thing at once, okay?
So, but my original question was, so, is the risk with this project more than the one we talked about previously where we decided one million? What do you think? Because that, I'm using that as our, our standard here because that's what we spent a long time discussing.
So what the applicant has proposed, okay, is the inspection, so there would not be, or there would
Right, the risk would be less for that.
Would be considerably less, so should you impose a higher insurance limit is what you're asking, but seeing as they are going to try and mitigate any of that before, I see no reason to ask for a higher limit.
That's a good point.
Okay, so they've actively decided to say, you know what, we're going to check.
Right.
So is there really a reason to ask for more money in insurance?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so that.
No, I just wanted to try and
Yeah.
have a discussion.
Yeah. I, I.
For people to know what, you know, this is all about.
So yeah, I, I don't, I feel that the, the coverage is sufficient, okay, you will have a five year review.
Right.
Okay, so at that point in time, in five years, if we don't feel it's sufficient, then we would ask for more. Okay.
Okay, then I'm satisfied with the way it is previous.
Do you want?
Okay. I'd move that the, that a special condition be added that the applicant must provide twenty four hour notice of any cancellation or change in insurance, and within five days of cancellation, provide proof of new certificate of insurance. The certificate of insurance shall be provided to the town annually, and I'm going to add something. And the town shall be named as additionally insured. That's the insurance coverage be reviewed every five years for adequacy of coverage by the planning board, and that a minimum coverage of one million per occurrence and three million aggregate be provided. That the applicant must maintain continued occurrence based environmental slash pollution liability insurance coverage.
I think I got the bulk of it.
Want to read it again?
Applicant must provide a twenty four hour notice of any cancellation or change in insurance, and within five days of cancellation, provide proof of new certificate of insurance. The certificate of insurance shall be provided to the town annually, and the town shall be named as additionally insured, then you said the policies shall be reviewed every five years. I think I lost you from there, how you changed it?
Yeah, the policy shall be reviewed every five years for adequacy of coverage by the planning board.
We have them in there already, no.
It's, it's a little, it's worded a little different.
It is.
Okay, I got it, hold on. Every five years for adequacy of coverage, okay. Did you change the next sentence?
Not change.
Minimum coverage of one million per occurrence and three million, in a three million aggregate?
That's the decision.
Okay, applicant must maintain continued occurrence based environmental pollution liability insurance coverage, did you keep that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes. Got it.
Okay, motion. Second.
Second.
Okay, Heather.
Got it.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor? Okay.
I would move that any changes to the site plan approval under the special permit shall be required, shall require the applicant to file for an amendment to the special permit.
Addison said. All in favor?
Something about the house and the maintenance of the house.
Okay, yes, so what are you proposing?
Does the house have an actual street address that we should reference in this? But it says sixteen Summers Road. So the residents, that sixteen Summers Road be the people need to remain, maintain a livable condition.
Okay. Um, yeah, because, so here's the deal, we don't allow we don't allow residents living, if you will, in the business district.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Some of these phrase, in a, in a manner consistent with neighboring but it's going to be used as a business center.
It's going to be, it'll be used as an office, right?
So would that qualify as habitable or business use?
For a business use, okay, yeah.
Meetings of painting is maintained, the roof is maintained. Structurally sound.
So, so I think our condition, we'd want to, backing up before we get there, I think we'd want to reference that the existing building would be restored would be restored, number one, right, because I'm just trying to think of the process. We've got the plans, we have the permanent plan. I guess they, they've told us that they're going to restore it, but does it actually say it in the application or something that the special permit's going to reference?
Reuse the existing, our historic facilities, office, propose to demolish the garage building. She just reuse. So restore necessary and re.
Maintain the exterior aesthetically pleasing.
Exterior and then aesthetically pleasing and the interior in a habitable for business use, something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Maintain. Usable? I mean.
You're trying to avoid it basically falling into disrepair.
Right, right, or falling into such repair that it can't be used as an office.
Right.
And then something else has to happen, you know? I'm not familiar with that language. Occupancy.
Allow for, allow for, yeah, to allow for, maintain in a manner that allows for occupancy.
Because he's business, it is business, he's, yes.
Because let's say that, you know, the water to build the cross up, you know? So this, this goes to border health issues. Building, right?
Definitely building issues, I would imagine, border health.
Yeah. So.
What have you got so far, Julian?
I have, the existing building will be restored and maintained in a manner that allows for the intended purpose.
They can be at the
Did you bring an interior also?
Well, we have the, proposed the exterior be maintained in aesthetically pleasing. Condition for manner.
Yeah. System with so that's, that's just not with the character of the town.
The application says, act and can't preserve the existing historical building on the site and use it as an office building.
Yeah.
As part of the project, the building will be spruced up and get a fresh coating.
Yeah. It says nothing about the structure or the electricity, nothing.
Well, yeah.
So, they would, so if we're worried about not letting it fall into disrepair on the interior, it'd take a long time, but still, you know, you could reference maintaining the interior in a condition in the condition necessary to allow for occupancy. Yeah. You got any thoughts here?
I'm, I'm still, yeah. I'm trying to come up with some, trying to come up with some wording here, I'm not sure.
First, but we wanted, we wanted to both restore and maintain, does it need restoration? I know nothing about this.
Yeah.
Yes.
What do you think it needs?
The outside needs to be painted up, I would also blend up the windows.
Yeah.
You know, probably original, and either need to be, you know, repaired or replaced. So it does need some restoration.
So on the north side of the building, if you looked at the building, the north side has some windows that are in disrepair, storm windows, it's got old fashioned storm windows on. Of course, that they're going to paint it, it's got some, you know, the green mold growing, algae, whatever on the sides, yeah. Um, so you know, those things now, maybe the siding and, you know, the roofing, I don't know how old it is, haven't been in the structure for a long, long, long time, okay? Um, I know it was inhabited previously by a couple people. So that was maybe ten, ten years, fifteen years ago, maybe. Um. So that's what I'm wrestling with, how, how am I going to how do I keep this building up, bring it up to a standard? Bring it up to a standard that is presentable at this time and maintain it in a manner that's consistent with the rest of the area, the rest of the neighborhood, the rest of the business district. That's what I'm.
Is there any issue with that, is it considered historical?
So there's no real, when we no, no.
There's certain requirements for that.
Correct, so there's no, there's no restriction on that.
Didn't we get
renderings?
Didn't we get renderings to start the application process?
So.
On what they proposed?
Yeah, here, this is
Is that under the?
This is on the
From the application.
So.
I, I have the. Pictures of what they proposed.
This is. No.
Do you want them, the pictures they provided? I think they have.
I think restore carries.
Oh, it carries too much an implication for.
I think it carries too much for interpretation. I think, because I believe one person's opinion of restore.
Is some of the, the exterior wood need replacing now, be, that would fall under restoration, isn't it? Yeah, so restore implies that you're making it look like it did in eighteen fifty.
And I would think it needs the same type of materials.
So repair, maybe repair would be the better word, repair and maintain.
That's, I mean, my statement is to clean, repair and maintain existing structure to enable. The building to function as an office. For the self storage facility. Now, the question is, and I, again.
But I think we do wanna tie it to the renderings that they showed us.
Yeah.
They were referencing. You know, black door.
Right.
I didn't notice the difference. The black and white picture. I do have them. It is, it just looks black and white and black and white, I didn't think it was.
Make a motion that the. Building exterior at sixteen Summers Road. Be repaired.
I said cleaned.
In a condition, in a condition as depicted. Renderings. Dated September tenth, twenty twenty one.
Does that really say that they're gonna keep this place up to date?
I got another one for the insider, but I think we should do it. Or separate condition.
So what about?
So, repeat.
The building exterior at sixteen Summers Road be cleaned, repaired and maintained in a condition as depicted in renderings dated nine, ten, twenty twenty one.
This picture's efficient though. You know, I, I can't see.
So that leaves.
Can the applicant provide a list of the improvements?
So they already do in the application. Yeah, that's what we're trying to do, is figure out what.
Do we just say in good repair? That too big?
That's fine.
Safe occupation. We're gonna use occupancy as a word, right? The exterior of the building also is important. Have they hole in the wall? Or you had no roof or.
I would assume you would get a notice from the building inspector. Regardless of whether you got a pink front door or a black one. Right, so like that's, that's what I think we need to. You know, someone comes in later and puts a pink front door on it. Doesn't really. Match what you'd expect the building of that age to look like. What was the language they used in their application? So, we're looking for the building to me, I, I think we just put that the building be maintained in a, in good condition.
And we know repair. Necessary repair. In good condition. To allow for business occupancy.
Sure, alright, so. Motion with them.
Are we adding or changing?
We're adding to John's.
Building exterior at sixteen Summers Road. Be cleaned, repaired and maintained in a condition as depicted in renderings dated nine, ten, twenty twenty one.
So then. Let's just leave it as the building at sixteen Summers Road will be cleaned, repaired. The exterior of the building at sixteen Summers Road will be cleaned, repaired and ma- maintained in good condition.
Yeah.
Throughout the use of the property. Interior.
So we're not referencing, no, okay. Reading, the exterior. The building exterior at sixteen Summers Road be cleaned, repaired and maintained in good. Condition throughout the use of the property.
No, cover that, yeah. For the light, for the light of the special, for the light of the special.
I think we should say something about exterior color schemes shall be consistent with historical period.
Exterior shall be. Exterior colors. Shall be, shall be. As they are now.
Consistent with historical. Should be period correct.
Yeah, historical period.
It should be, yeah, yeah.
Colors, okay. Including the roofs.
Is this a separate motion or combined? Okay. The exterior of the building at sixteen Summers Road. Not just be cleaned, you want to say shall. Shall be cleaned, repaired and maintained in good condition for the life of the special permit. Exterior. Of the building, you wanna say? To be, to be historical, historical period colored, to be. That doesn't sound right, to be of historical color, historical period color.
I think I said period correct, but.
Historical period correct.
Hysterically, historically.
Historical period.
Correct colors.
Okay.
And actually, I can add that interior sentence, my thought on the interior sentence would be.
Do you wanna combine?
It's up to you, because we're talking about the exterior. My thought on interior language would be the interior shall be maintained in a condition that allows for continued occupancy.
This interior building shall be maintained in a condition, go ahead.
That allows for continued occupancy.
I'm done, we're gonna change it again. The exterior of the building at sixteen Summers Road shall be cleaned, repaired and maintained in good condition for the life of the special permit. The exterior of the building to be of, to be historical period correct color. That's what you said. Including the roof. That doesn't sound right to me, but, sorry. The interior shall be maintained in a condition that allows for continued occupancy. Okay.
All in favor? I was just gonna ask, is there any other, when you say this one, any other conditions?
Yes.
That's what you mean.
Do we need, we don't, do we need to strike?
We, we saw it, we will be, um, so, okay, if you wanna do it as a condition.
I thought we did a revised. That's the reason.
Entertaining motion to approve. The self storage facility under section six, table six, four point two eight, self storage. Storage facility and six point one one water protection overlay district. So moved. All in favor? All those opposed? Very good, I'm going to close the. Regular board meeting. Thank you all.